All right, I will call order the Board of Franklin County Commissioners Meeting for Wednesday, November first.
Commissioner Howard?
Present.
Vice Chair Renode?
Present.
Chair Weymeyer?
Present.
Commissioner Oglesby?
Present.
Commissioner Dunn?
Present. If you'd please stand and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance, remain standing for the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
That looks like it, I guess.
Okay. Father, we just thank you today, God, for this opportunity that we have to do the people's business, God, to seek your wisdom, to seek your knowledge, Father, and your guidance as we go about this. We ask for your hand of protection upon us and all of our county workers today, God, as they go through their day. Father, we just thank you, God, that we live in a country of the land of freedom, that many people paid a very dear price for, and Father, we just give you all the praise and the glory. Amen.
Do we have any correspondence or organizational business? All right, is there any public comment?
Yes. We have Mr. Braden Anschwitz.
Good morning, Commissioners. I am Braden Anschwitz. I'm the principal at West Franklin Elementary at Williamsburg, and traditionally, we have held a Veterans Day program, and this year, we will be doing it. We rotate it back from another school in our district, and it's our year to do it. We honor them with a program. Our students do some performances, and then after that, we have a luncheon for the veterans. It's something that our kids enjoy, we enjoy doing. In the past, you've been kind enough to give us a donation. I'm here today asking if there's any donation that you may be willing to give to allow us to, we'll use the money to have a dinner for our veterans. Just any donation, except Mr. Howard's wife said that whatever they gave, whatever they gave, we're supposed to double because two reasons. He's an alumni of Williamsburg, and she said so, so I'm just doing what she told me.
I thought Rick was gonna match, that's what I thought.
Oh, maybe.
I could do that. I'm thinking, are we taking $10, or what are we?
I know he makes his wife work a lot, because...
Are we gonna, do you wanna go ahead and vote on that? I'm thinking the 200 that we do to everybody else.
And I feel like that's what we have this work we've done for this event is 200. So, yeah, I don't, you can vote on that certainly. I can, with clear direction, I can authorize that. But however you feel most comfortable, certainly.
Whatever you, oh, whatever you wanna do.
Let's just vote on it, make it, since it's our decision, I guess.
I'll make a motion that we donate 200 to the Williamsburg Elementary for the veterans' dinner and program.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right.
Thank you very much. Have a good day.
Thanks. All right, that conclude the public comment? Right. Consent agenda today, our consent agenda would include, consider to approve minutes from our meeting on October 25th, our study session on the 30th, claim vouchers in the amount of $261,451.99, payroll in the amount of $1,120,98.62, and tax change order in the amount of negative $97.12. Is there a motion for the consent agenda to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as read.
Second.
Commissioner Renode?
Yes.
Commissioner Oglesby?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes, on everything, abstain from the study session minutes.
Commissioner Howard?
Yes.
Chair Weymeyer?
Yes.
Our first item of business would be to consider for approval, a donation request to the Ottawa Veterans Day Celebration at Haley Park.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Most of you know me, I'm Sherri Wright Anderson. I wanted to thank you for allowing me to come and speak on behalf of our Veterans Day Parade Committee. As you know, we start, most of you know, we started it 25 years ago. Rick was involved, and Roy's been involved. It's grown to, from 10 units to over 200. Now, we have, instead of one-day event, we have three days, which involves a lot of reenactments. So due to all this growth, I'm here to request that Franklin County donate 100, or 100,000, $1,000 again this year, which will go toward all the year's festivities.
Well, I might add to that, they bring in about 110 to 120 reenactors, and they're fed, and also, we provide hay and straw to the horses, we purchase ordinances for the reenactors, and of course, we had events at Carnegie Hall, demonstrations. Sometimes we have to pay for specialized military equipment that comes in and fuel, so there's quite a lot of expenses with it, plus we'll also maintain the flag display, which will be going up at City Park this year, so there's a lot of, a lot of things that goes into this program.
Also, we do have insurance, and speakers, and pyrotechnics, and a lot of that goes to that also.
Is this what we've donated in the past?
Yep.
Anyone like to make a motion to approve donating $1,000 to the Ottawa Veterans Day Celebration?
I got, I got one quick question. Is this, with this being, it brings in this many people, I think, would this be a tourism-type thing that would fall under?
Yeah, I mean, if it brings people into the community, and by the way it's being described, I would say it certainly does, so yeah, this would be eligible for...
We have them come from different states, Missouri, Nebraska, Oklahoma.
And that's something that Jane and I can discuss after the meeting, certainly would be eligible, and if so, I would think would be a good use of those dollars.
Has the tourism donated anything separate from what we're talking about here on this that you know of? You haven't?
Okay. All right.
So would you like to make a motion?
Yeah.
On combination of that, out of guest tax funds, or?
I'm thinking that's probably the best place to take it from for this kind of situation.
Sounds very logical to me.
Needing discretion to Gavin Derrick, you know, I mean, how much of it, or of all of it, or whatever. Yeah, I'll make a motion that we donate 1,000 for the Veterans Day Celebration, and Derrick and Jack can decide which would be the best place to take that out of. Second, the motion.
Commissioner Oglesby?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Howard?
Yes.
Commissioner Renode?
Yes.
Chair Weymeyer?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, thanks for coming in.
Thanks for the work you do, yeah. That's great.
All right, our second item of business is consider for approval, an agreement for professional services with Bartlett and West for the provision of construction administration services at Proximity Park.
Yeah, as you all are very well aware, we have recruited Bartlett and West for certain engineering services out of Proximity Park. Kind of at the commencement of this project, we entered into a contract with them for design services, and the park is, and I've asked Darren to be here to talk more, but it's largely designed. I mean, I think we've recently made what might be our last payment under the design contract. What you have in front of you today is the contract for construction administration services. In other words, the park is designed, and we're on the cusp of beginning construction, and so they are going to assist us with that. This agreement is very similar to the one for design services. I've thoroughly reviewed it. A couple of things, just to bring to your attention, the total fee for this project, according to this contract, won't exceed $957,200. This is an expense that we have planned for. We've got the funding through a bond issue to do this. Any additional services that aren't outlined in here must be agreed upon in advance of those services being performed. I, it's a good contract, I have no concerns with it. To the extent you have questions about the services themselves, I would ask that Darren come up and answer those questions.
Come on up there. You'll explain basically what we're purchasing here.
Good morning, gentlemen. I'm Darren Ammon with Bartlett and West. Excited to have this in front of you and, you know, take our next step with what we've been planning for a long time and get Proximity Park under construction, bid and under construction in the near future. The short version, without getting into the details, and Derek and I have talked about that, and he's thoroughly looked through that, is this is a construction observation contract where Bartlett and West is listed as the prime. PEC has services as a subconsultant underneath us within this contract. It is an hourly upper limit contract for the amount Derek mentioned, and will be billed monthly upon commencement of the services starting. They will last as long as the, you know, construction is listed for Kingman and Montana Road, the new bridge, and that includes the intersection design as well. So everything's kind of wrapped in there for those. Any services for the site and those types of items, that's a different contract with the city of Ottawa. So that's, that's what's being put in front of you today, and I'll be glad to answer any more questions if you have them.
I don't have a question, I just want to make sure this is something we did plan for, and this is nothing new that...
Yeah, it absolutely is, and this is the exact type of thing that you all, I mean, have told me because we approved the bond issue, that I could go ahead and execute these, but given the gravity of this particular contract, I deemed it prudent to bring it back in front of you. But yeah, this is, there were two phases to Bartlett's service design and then these administration services. That's been part of the discussion from the very beginnings.
We have received in part of our packet, Bartlett and West's 2017 schedule of hourly charges, and I presume that that fee, that's the total amount, it's been based off of those charges, is, do you expect that there's gonna be an increase in hourly rate for 2018? I mean, are we still gonna be okay? That's what I'm trying to figure out, is 'cause I know there's always an increase when the year rolls around, but...
Sure. Our company's looking at that right now, and those, we do have rate increases that would happen at the first of every year. There's no guarantee, certain rates for certain folks are even gonna go up. I couldn't even answer that specifically. It is potential. I think ultimately, to answer your question, we feel this contract being an hourly upper limit, we're gonna be well within that. I mean, there's a chance we won't even reach that upper number with what's going on, but that is dependent on whether the bid, the contractor, are they on time, you know? 50 factors that are outside of our control, but all along, it's been built in to really feel like that's the hourly upper limit max, and hopefully, things go smoothly. We're not, we're not...
Just wasn't looking for any surprises because you had an hourly increase.
Yeah. I mean, you're talking, maybe it's two bucks an hour, or something like that, for the construction observer at this point, who hasn't even been necessarily assigned to do that work until we get it bid and know which date we're starting and who that'll be, so, but for me to you, I feel like we're well comfortable with where we would be to have that covered for the construction period for this project.
And to supplement that, Rick, I mean, this is obviously a binding legal obligation, and so if we execute this, and Bartlett does, that $957,000, like, they are contractually bound to not go above that, and they're also contractually bound to provide certain services, so if their rates go up, I mean, that's really for them to figure out in terms of how they can provide that level of service within this, you know, parameter. But as he stated, and I've been working with him very closely, I have no reason to question him, that is an upper limit, and the hope is that we don't, we're not really snipping that too closely.
Do you, do you do design work for the 59 Kingman Road interchange there?
Yes, PEC is handling most of that as part of our design work right now, correct.
Okay, KDOT's not involved in that?
KDOT is involved in that, yes. So currently, that is really, as Derek mentioned, 99% of the design work for everything out at Proximity Park is mostly done at this point. There's still plating, right-of-way acquisition, and different things like that that are currently happening. The one design component that is still going through the process is the intersection design with KDOT, that's going through the steps. We knew all along and had that planned within the schedule, Mr. Dunn, that that was going to be extended beyond really the initial design services for Kingman and Montana on the bridge, and we're kind of at a point here, we, everybody's excited, we kinda gotta get this bid, but the intersection design, actually, the timing of it right now, since it's really been delayed a little bit from maybe what we initially had planned to have services bid and get under construction at the park, it's probably gonna ultimately maybe save some money because there's gonna be some, the intersection and the road, some of that stuff might not have to be built temporarily to tie it in, and they'll be able to do some of that efficiency. But from, from a design team standpoint, I do wanna say, we, we do kinda wanna get things bid soon, 'cause my only concern would be as if there's, you know, we wait too long to get this going, and a lot of the excavators and other folks who'd be interested in doing this work start to get a full plate in the spring, could cause potentially some challenges, maybe with bids. I have no idea, again, that's not within our privy of how bids are gonna be, but there's other things that need to get done with acquisition and so forth before that can happen, so we're working on that as best as possible. Does that answer your question, or?
No.
Okay.
And again, to supplement, and one of the major things that we're trying to accomplish is right-of-way acquisition, and I can tell you that both the city and county are pouring a lot of resources into making that happen as quickly and responsibly as possible, and so certainly, I want the board to know that we're working hard in that regard to keep this as close to on schedule as we can. But as you know, when trying to acquire land, I mean, the landowner is a necessary party and all that, and we're kind of receiving varying degrees of cooperation there, and so, but certainly, I will keep you all apprised of how that is working.
All right. We have a agreement in front of us for professional services with Bartlett and West. Would anyone like to take a motion to approve?
Make the motion.
Is there a second?
Commissioner Oglesby?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Howard?
Yes.
Commissioner Renode?
Yes.
Chair Weymeyer?
Yes.
All right, our third item of business is to consider entering into a lease with Pitney Bose for a new mail machine. We discussed this Monday at our study session, and Jody Edwards, our treasurer, county treasurer, is here.
So, I don't know if anyone, I know, Mr. Dunn, you weren't here on Monday, if you had any questions about the Pitney Bose lease, it is up. We have a proposal from Pitney Bose for a new machine for, for processing of mail, and since we don't send out a tax statements ourselves any longer, I did not feel that we need as high-speed a machine, and the speed of the machine is, pretty much dictates the price, so I lowered that to a mid-range machine, and it will save the county some money, not as much as I had hoped at first, but the state had contracted finally with Pitney Bose at a higher rate than what they had last year, so we get whatever they get.
I don't have a question, I just wanna make a statement that I really appreciate that you're doing this. A lot of times, we just have leases that's went for a long time, and we just stay with them because that's what we've been doing, and I appreciate that you looked into this and saw that we could save money, and we didn't need as much as what we had, and appreciate you doing that.
Thank you, thank you, very much. Appreciate your appreciation.
Well, we've already talked about this quite a bit and vetted it out, you certainly have, so would anyone like to make a motion to enter into the agreement with Pitney Bose for the mail machine?
Salute.
Is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Howard?
Yes.
Commissioner Renode?
Yes.
Commissioner Oglesby?
Yes.
Chair Weymeyer?
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen, appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Fourth item of business is also a continuation of a conversation we had on Monday. It's to potentially enter into an agreement for consulting and creative development services for the tourism department.
Good morning.
Morning.
I have Lee with me today, he was kind enough to join us in case there's any particular
questions that you all have. I've had an opportunity to talk with Derek on the phone, he's had an opportunity to review the contract itself, you know, obviously, that's his area of expertise, so I acquiesced to him about that. Lee and I have had a meeting to discuss the memorandum of understanding, and I do have copies of those today. If you're, if you do not have a paper copy, I can certainly hand that to you. What kind of questions do you have at this point after reviewing?
I'm happy to step in and talk a little bit about the agreements. I've worked with Lee on those, and we revised them ever so slightly. Pretty good, pretty solid contracts that he gave, made a couple of nips and tucks, but I don't have any issues with these agreements. You have two attachments in front of you, one of them is very difficult to read, it kinda sets out a proposed schedule of things, things maybe to anticipate, and people get more eligible copies.
I've got a hard copy, if it's a little easier to read.
Yeah, if you've got a...
Still small, but...
I was surprised, man.
That's what five couples are for, guys. No worries.
And then the second attachment there is a new schedule, as discussed on Monday, $12,000 for these services. He's requested $6,000, and then $545 a month thereafter. That's absolutely no issue from a budgeting standpoint, you've got the cheap funds to do that, so I see nothing concerning about either the agreement or... I would take advantage of both Susan and Lee while they're here if you have any questions about the services themselves, because I can't really speak to those, but contractually, this is pretty solid.
I will bring to your attention that I did contact Lee as I was working on my budget. One of the things it talks about in here, obviously, is advertising, and I wanted to make sure that the budget that I presented to Derek did contain any additional, and the, and we did check that out, we kind of have a approximate amount that we hope to be able to spend, but it does fall within the parameters of the budget that I submitted for advertising. So, no significant changes at this juncture.
Any other questions for Susan? I think we're still digesting information a little bit.
I know, and that's fine, that's a lot.
Well, sometimes silence, and silence is nerve-wracking. Anybody be ready to make a motion to vote?
I make a motion, we approve the agreement for profess, or for this consultation and creative development services.
Is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Howard?
Yes.
Commissioner Renode?
Yes.
Commissioner Oglesby?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Chair Weymeyer?
Yes.
I really wanna thank you so much for this opportunity, and we're really excited to get started, and if it would be all right, at some point, we'd like to come in and kinda give you updates on an ongoing basis to let you know where we're at, and hope that you'll, you know, reach out to me if you ever have any questions, so, thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Staff reports.
Yeah, I, Doug Riches here this morning. We talked a little bit yesterday about signage on the annex, and in talking, the permanent signage, and it takes a while to design these signs, and so that's going to be a while before that can occur. In the meantime, he is going to give us a better illustration of exactly what that will look like with their two new signs, as well as the placement of our sign. That's not why he's here this morning, he's here this morning because he, they are requesting to put up a banner in the interim, because they are opening up, opening up a new office here in the annex and providing new services, so I asked him to come and speak with all of you about that. Hello? I can unroll this if you guys wanna see. I have the banner itself, so. So I had Brenda, this one, sketch this up last night. Hopefully, there's, I hope we got some copies.
All right, we can pass it.
This is, it shows the, the sign changes that we're asking for, which would be the permanent. Currently, right now, Franklin County offices is on the, when you're facing the building, is on the far left. We wanna move it to the right, we'll pay for the move, 'cause we're actually adding the pediatric clinic. So we have two new signs that will go up on the left, we just wanted ours together, so it didn't go Franklin County, us, then you guys, so. And in the meantime, we just had a banner created, because it takes six to eight weeks to create signs, so we wanted to put the banner up just to let everybody know that Dr. Costa's here with the pediatric clinic. And we're proposing that we just stretch it between two, two posts out front, up top, get it out of everybody's way, probably on the far left. I can unroll the banner if you guys wanna see it. It's basically gonna look just like, it's hard to see, but it's gonna just say RMH Pediatric Care.
I don't think we, I don't need to see it, I can see it.
Yeah, and I, and Derek wanted me to have a little better illustration, which so you guys could understand about the signage moveage. Your signage will just be moved over to the other side of there. Questions?
I have no problem with handing this.
Sounds good to me.
If you don't like where the banner's at, let us know, we'll move it.
We'll tell you where to put it.
Okay, all right, thanks. Thanks.
Thank you. Beyond that, we had a department head and elected official meeting yesterday where we're really starting to dig into our employee evaluation process. On the purpose for digging into this is, you know, we sometimes lose good employees to some of our adjacent counties, and our, our location here in Franklin County is kind of a blessing, and of course, being in proximity to Johnson and Douglas and Johnny, it does help drive our valuation, it does make us, you know, a attractive place to live for some folks. The flip side of that, of course, is there are a lot of jobs in those communities, and sometimes it's hard for us to pay hours. You know, conventional wisdom is, well, you know, you've gotta pay people more. I disagree with that to a certain extent, and I also think, given our financial situation as well as tax lid that we are under, it's just literally impossible to give, I mean, we have a pay plan that we're gonna try to continue to stick to, but that won't include dramatic raises at any point, we just can't do that, and so if you can't do that, what do you do, or you make this a better place to work? And I think that by letting people know that you appreciate them, by training them to be better at their jobs, by giving them attention that helps them become what they wanna be, and I think a critical tool in that process is the employee evaluation, and we have some departments and offices that are great at them, and we have others not so much, and so the purpose of this process is to try to get the entire organization on the same page, and have some fairness across the board, and just have a more intensive evaluation process such that, you know, we might lose people, but if they go to these other organizations, I would like to get us to a... I would like to get us to a point where they can say, you know what? Yeah, the money was nice for a while, but I was managed so much better there, I was trained so much better, I felt cared for there and that might cause some of them to come back again. And we've seen where, I mean, one employee, I mean, can make a huge difference in a department and an organization. So this is a process we're going to be working on for quite some time. But just letting you know that that is one of the endeavors that we're currently undertaking, so. And I don't have any good comments.
Sheriff's Office, Janet, do you have anything?
Just want to let you guys know that the tax bills are all calculated and they've dropped into the treasurer system so she can start collecting the 2017 taxes and the statements are off to the printer. So hopefully they'll be going out in about a week or so, so.
Would you like to give us a hint about what to expect here for lunch?
Sure.
All right. Not the meal, but.
It's a box lunch, so.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, today Prairie Paws is holding our community assessment for the city and the county. So we've got a couple of city commissioners who will be joining you over at City Hall at 11:30. It'll be a presentation by Team Tax, so I'll be there, do a welcome, and then Prairie Paws will leave and it's just helping us get ready for our strategic plan. So what services do we perform well, what services do we need to improve on? And just from the county's perspective on what you guys are seeing as needs for animal welfare. So should be about an hour, hour and a half, I would say, and that should be it. Any questions? All right, I'll see you at 11:30.
All right. Commissioners comments, board reports.
I haven't attended anything since last meeting. Last Wednesday night I attended the Wellsville City Council meeting. They had a presentation from the Willow Domestic Violence Center with Cassie Myers. Then they discussed putting their codes and proposals online instead of having just hard copies available. I'm not sure exactly how that statutes read, but it seemed that if you had them online, then you didn't have to have so many hard copies or whatever available for public. And then they also discussed some crosswalks. They recently did some chip and seal, so now they have some crosswalks that need to be replaced and striped. And then the city swimming pool was a big item, whether to do some type of liner in it or how major construction we're going to do, is going to be temporary or long term. And then, if I understood correctly, I believe there's some discussion about possibly a new Casey's going to go in Wellsville on the south side of town there, how it should get off the interstate, a fairly large, significant size of Casey's. So I don't know how quick that will be coming, but anyway, that was on the topic of the discussion too.
Also have not attended anything since the last time we met. Where am I?
I, Monday, Monday evening I went to training at ECAN for Head Start and Early Head Start. They got different rule changes to come out, there's mandatory training. Board members and policy board members go through that training. So learning more about Head Start and Early Head Start and of course, the goal of those programs is to have the children ready for school when they get old enough.
One more item maybe, Derek, I've had a comment or two. Obviously grain is harvested in full swing with the co-op's new bunker out there. It's amazing how much grain they've already stored there. But if you could remind Public Works that normally they start blading those roads again, but that desk control area, those people would really appreciate that not being touched, you know, during this time. Boy, if they can not blade up that, it would really be, I followed one of them last night, they're hauling a lot of grain over those roads. So that, if they, I know that they said the mower, maybe it not remove some of the flags where those areas were, but if you remind Public Works.
They have a ribbon cutting out there tomorrow, the bunkers.
All right, is there a motion to adjourn?
Make motion.
Is there a second? All right, all in favor? Opposed, we're adjourned.